For Albinata Thursday, June eighth, two thousand seventeen, seven o'clock, City Hall. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, do we have a second?
One second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, let's go ahead and go have a motion to open up public, public hearing on FY seventeen, two thousand seventeen budget amendment.
So moved.
Would move open the public hearing, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Steve second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, discussion comments and questions on the public hearing?
What we did was we had to, for, we amended our revenue for the seven hundred thousand, which was our GO bond, and then we transferred in two hundred six thousand and forty-four dollars. And then we upped our local option, doing better than what we had projected, so we upped that three thousand five hundred. So our total amended budget update was nine, nine hundred seventeen thousand forty-four dollars. On expenditures, we put four hundred thousand into the capital project, which is Moonheart Street up here. We added thirteen thousand to the fire department for those air packs. And we added seven thousand to debt service because we didn't endorse in Whitney. So we upped our total expenditures by six hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred forty-four dollars.
Thank you. Feel with all wishes.
Until we finish putting through the project next week.
Any other questions for that? If not, we're going to bring the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Would move, move to close the public hearing, we have a second?
The second.
Brian second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, okay, this is resolution of.
Point, do you want to go to the center?
Uh, yeah, we can, let's go.
I'll make it quick.
Let's get him out here so we can get through this.
Yeah, not a problem.
You can get going, go ahead, thank you.
Required forty-three, we put in sixty-six, sixteen calls of service.
Any other questions, you, please help.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now we get a motion from the.
Resolution. Any motion except resolution oh five dash two oh one seven dash five approval of the two thousand seventeen budget amendment?
So moved, that's the.
Turned, moved, moved, made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Chester second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, okay. Make the motion to open the council meeting?
I'll move.
We have a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We have four additional bills.
Four additional, okay.
Visa bill comes in on the table, we got that yesterday, for six hundred eleven dollars and seventy-one cents. Maccan's, there are twenty-five dollars for rental. And solid waste agency, forty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents, that was the gum for the station.
Two buckets, two buckets of loveliness.
And then MSA, we have, uh, it's a hundred ninety-six, a hundred sixty-nine hours of service from January one to May twenty-seventh, with nineteen thousand eight twenty-five seventy. And then eleven thousand six hundred sixty on our contract, so that makes us sixty-five percent complete on that contract, so a total of thirty-one thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy cents for MSA.
I missed that, thirty-one what?
Forty-five seventy.
Forty-five seventy.
Any kind of motion if there are any.
I saw moved, we approved the consent agenda with the added four other bills.
Okay.
I'm gonna take time to review these tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'll write the check in when you get them.
Okay. Too much time, Nina. You don't wanna wait on me. Believe me. So do I, do we amend this to, with his authorization?
An approval, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the addition of the four bills with the approval of Chester Johnson.
Motion's been made, we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Charlie second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, let me kind of sure, pardon, there, mine, fire department, you're up.
We had ten calls, month of May, made two medical in the city, three in the township, did PR at Egg in the Park in such a city, made a few storm watch, made one down power lines, and did a mutilated car accident, you know?
Any questions for the party, pardon?
Anything on those masks? I mean, that's what we thought, budget, we thought we'd do.
I haven't heard. I thought it was like a month maybe, but.
We'll go on to Joe.
Mayor, council members, thanks for having me. Joe Grani with Cedar Rapids, Lynn County Solid Waste Agency, here to give a annual update. What's been going on, I have an update, last, when I was here last year, we had the big increase with the recycling fee, speaking with Rudd, so I'll have an update about where that stands for this year and what's going on in the future, and then just some of the other programs that we have going on. The big history on the agency, we're a twenty-eight E organization, so we're not part of the city of Cedar Rapids, we're not part of the county, but we represent both, we're an intergovernmental agency. We have our nine member board of directors, we have six officials from the city of Cedar Rapids, Tulane County supervisors, Brent Olson, Jim Hauser, and then one appointee from the city of Marion. And all our services and programs are funded by our landfill tipping fee, we don't receive any taxpayer dollars, so that takes me into the first slide, we are raising the tipping fee this year, it's gonna go up to forty dollars per ton on July first, up from thirty-eight, this is our second increase, uh, we formed back in nineteen ninety-four, we were at thirty-five dollars from ninety-four up to two thousand ten, that's when we went to thirty-eight dollars, and now we're going up to forty. Basically that increase is gonna cover our operational cost increases that we've been seeing in our regulatory obligations with our landfill gas energy system. Another biggest change that our residents will see is our flat fee, the cars, the flat fee for cars is gonna be ten dollars, for cars, that should be as many vans, and then for pickup trucks and full-size vans, it's gonna be twenty dollars per load. The reason behind this one is, uh, it's actually a safety issue. You guys probably see this more than anybody else on Saturdays, when it gets busy out at the landfill, traffic getting back up on County Home Road, uh, back on April twenty-second this year, we had the busiest day that we've ever had at Solid Waste Agency since we formed in ninety-four. We had eight hundred and forty-nine ticketed customers come in that day. So that does, that's just ticketed customers, that's people who came in to throw away garbage, that doesn't include our recyclers who just give, we pass them through, so we had well over, you know, a thousand people coming in that day, so traffic back up County Home Road, coming this way, and going back towards Highway thirteen. And so what we're encouraging folks to do is take advantage of your curbside services, because we, we see the people, they go to our residential loading area, we always send the big trucks and the trailers down to the landfill, residents come in, we send them to the dumpsters that we have on the concrete pad, and people are coming in there, they have one, two, three, or four bags of garbage, so we ask them, like, why are you coming out there, like, oh, it's a nice day, a Saturday, we figure we take a trip out to the dump and just kinda make a day out of it, like, okay. But, you know, people are sitting in line there for twenty, forty-five minutes at a time, so we wanna encourage folks, save your gas, save your money, and save your time, take advantage of your curbside service, 'cause you can buy an extra garbage sticker, depending on where you live, anywhere from a dollar up to three dollars for a whole extra can, I don't know what Rudd, what they, what they're charging you here, but it's not that much, so if you only have one or two bags of garbage, do a curbside, otherwise, you know, when you're cleaning out somebody's house, it's spring cleaning, you're gonna get your money's worth, we encourage people to come out then, but otherwise, take advantage of what's going on curbside. So inside that building, go talking about recycling, recycling is still no charge for Lynn County residents, so like, your paper, plastic, glass, cardboard, you bring it right inside the building, you can recycle it in there for no charge. And, uh, that contract, remember we were talking about last year, um, we went out for a bid, Republic Services was the only company that responded to our bid, they said, hey, we still wanna process your recycling, but we're gonna raise your rates eighty-eight percent. Uh, so that's the contract they ended up signing, we're still under contract with them, it's gonna go through into two thousand eighteen. Uh, the good news is now, um, there's competition in the area, another recycling company has opened up over in Marion by the new police station down there called Quincy Recycling, they've been in the recycling business for sixty years, so we're probably gonna be going out for a bid at the end of the summer, early fall, 'cause that whole process took us a year last time to get that worked out, and we're hoping having that competition will drive that price down, 'cause we're paying that sixty-five dollars per ton right now. We've also been contacted by the recycler that handles the city of Des Moines recycling, saying, hey, when, next time you goes out, go off the contract, let us know, that's something we might be interested in, so we're hoping competition to drive that cost down, and if we can get that price down, obviously, we're gonna pass that back along to our customers and then to our residents ultimately, so I'll be in touch with Sharon, let her know as soon as that gets works out with the new prices, so hopefully we'll have some good news for that next year. Inside the resource recovery building is where we also have the electronic recycling, uh, fluorescent bulbs, batteries, household hazardous materials, and out of all those, you know, uh, the only thing that would be charged for electronics are the TVs, same thing happened to us last year when our TV contractor, electronics recycling went up, we worked with, uh, Midwest Electronic Recovery in Walford, contract was up, they're like, hey, we're gonna have to raise your prices, we're gonna triple your price. Like, okay, we're going out for a bid, we got three responses back, Midwest was still below us, even after tripling the price for, uh, taking in TVs. So now, if you have a small TV, eighteen inches or smaller, it's ten dollars per unit, the bigger council TVs and anything bigger than nineteen inches is fifteen dollars per unit, but all other electronics, there's no charge, so your old vacuum cleaners, hair dryers, basically anything that's not an appliance, you can plug in, you can recycle that for free.
Computers?
Computers, yes.
What if residents just have their computers curbside or something like that, would they pick those up as part of their?
Uh, Rudd will not pick them up curbside.
You gotta bring it out there.
Yeah, Mariana's, yeah. Uh, battery, fluorescent bulbs, we take for no charge from residents, batteries, and then household hazardous materials, that program, we continue to completely subsidize, so your old, uh, paints, chemicals, stains, cleaners, fertilizers, the stuff that's been sitting in the garage, you don't know what it is anymore, it's in a glass container, you can bring that in, anytime we're open, no appointment necessary, drop that off, no charge. I did include a new slide this year, uh, about battery recycling, we want folks to know, your household alkaline batteries, your double A, triple A, nine volt C and D, when they're used up, throw them away, those don't need to be recycled, there's no hazardous materials inside them, and, uh, you can't actually recover enough material out of them that makes it worth transporting anywhere to break them down, but all other batteries, you know, obviously car batteries, lead acid, watch batteries, hearing aid batteries, uh, power tool batteries, those need to be recycled, the reason why is, I included two pictures down there, we had three fires in the landfill last year, uh, what happened was, our, it was one of our contractors, our gozers, drove over top, but one was an old drone, one was just a kid's, uh, toy, it had that battery case on there, it cracked open, the air ignited with what was inside of it, and then our spotter who was down there that day told us, you know, it was like a spray paint can had to pierce, just this plume shot straight up in the air, so they were able to get over there, isolate, that's what their job is, there's literally spotting, looking for appliances and tires and stuff that can't be thrown away, so they got that isolated, they put it out, luckily we have a fire chief on staff that can help us with that stuff too. Uh, but, you know, fire is our biggest concern out there, you know, remember the Iowa City Fire from a couple of years ago, after all is said and done with that, that cost them twelve million dollars, so our biggest concern is we don't wanna fire out here, and so we want folks to know, alkaline batteries, no worries, throw them away, every other battery needs to be recycled, and we'll take it for free. Uh, speaking of free, our free stuff room, that's how it's still going on, everything that comes in with the hazardous materials, we, uh, check it, our guys, it's still usable, they put it in that room right next door, there's a big door on the outside that says free paint, cleaners, et cetera, you can't miss it, and I've been here, how many years now, I've come and tell you, yeah, if you don't have any concerns about what color paint it is, come out there, take a look, I tell folks now, don't bother with that, if you're out there for something else, maybe stop in and check, but this room gets picked over so fast anymore, that day that we had eight hundred and forty-nine customers, that Saturday, our guys spent all day Monday going through the material, getting that room stocked, it was completely full, on Tuesday morning, we opened at seven AM, by eleven o'clock, it was empty again, so we've got apartment owners, contractors, they're coming in there every morning, and they take anything that's usable, so that's good, it's being reused, they're actually using it up, but it's kinda slim taken for everybody else, so if you're, if you're out there, stop in, but I can't always guarantee there's gonna be much in there anymore. Environmental education, we do have our licensed teacher on staff, I know he's actually spent quite a bit of time up here in Albinata this year in the schools, uh, working, this year we had every sixth grader in the area came through the, the landfill, so they see that, you know, there's no such thing as throwing it away when it comes to garbage, when you're in Lynn County, they're actually seeing where it goes, and he's working with everybody from preschool kids up to graduate level college students, so if you know any teachers that are looking for curriculum ideas around, you know, Earth Day, America Recycles Day, give them a call and he can provide them with some ideas. Uh, our landfill gas energy system, I was talking about this with our regulatory obligations, uh, this, you know, it used to be, you'd see the flare burner at night, it was burning off the methane, you know, the landfill gases, now they entered the engine, it's taking those gases and converting them into electricity, goes down to the substation on County Home Road, and then out to the grid, and right now we're powering about eleven hundred homes each day with, uh, gases created by the landfill. And then going forward, as the landfill ages, it's gonna be, keep pumping more gas, there might be the need for a second engine, that's an expensive investment, but this engine, we thought initially it was gonna take about ten years to pay off, but it looks like it's actually gonna pay for itself, uh, return on investment within seven years, so that's what kind of, with that typically increased, that's gonna go towards taking care of those landfill gases, which we're obligated to do at the federal level. Uh, the monarch zone included a picture of this, last year we put up one of these rearing tents, we're taking part in that, uh, monarch initiative with the monarch research project, we produced a hundred and fifty-six monarch butterflies, this year we added two more tents, so we're hoping to triple the output, and, uh, it's just, it's kind of, it's a feel-good program, we just planted eighteen acres worth of milkweed, uh, down in Mount Trashmore, we have a couple farmers on staff who couldn't believe we actually planted milkweed on purpose, but, uh, it's, it's good for the monarchs, and with, uh, with this, uh, something's gonna happen later, this, probably end of the summer, going into September, um, we wanna create some pollinator zones for these monarchs out of County Home Road too, and the best way that to plant pollinators is you're supposed to do a burn, well, with all the methane and other gases out there, we can't do a burn, so what we're gonna do the next best thing, which is, we're gonna bring in goats, we received a grant from the DNR, we're gonna bring in about two hundred goats, and they're gonna take down the, the closed thirty acres, landfill cell when you first come in there, uh, they're gonna, two hundred of them, it's gonna take them about two to three weeks, they'll come in with a shepherd, they'll put up fencing and watch them each day, and then after they're done, it's the same effect as the prescribed burn, and then we'll plant the pollinators, so you go, I, uh, you know, this September, you see a bunch of goats out there that's on purpose, and it's, uh, it's for a pretty good cause. Uh, next, you have a picture there of what's going down in Mount Trashmore and Cedar Rapids, um, that's a rendering of what this, a scenic overlook we're gonna have there, that's actually under construction right now, and it should be ready by mid-September, by the first of October for sure this year, so that's gonna, we're opening it up to the public whenever that, that site's open, which is the same hours, seven to four-thirty, Monday through Saturday, folks will be able to come up there and take pictures, and just kinda taking it, it's the best view in Lynn County, and then as soon as the overlook is completed, we're gonna start working on a trail system that's gonna go from the top of Mount Trashmore, uh, down to the bottom, where there's already a trail going along the Cedar River that will hook up with that, so again, when we're open, people will get in and access that. I recommend folks right now, if you don't have to go down there, don't, it's a mess, the city of Cedar Rapids is doing a bunch of flood protection work down there, so A Street itself is closed, getting into the sites a mess, the, the trail system, people are having to cross our street with the trucks going in and out with the yardways, so it, it's a mess, but it'll be better hopefully, uh, come this fall. The facility is still open, uh, our compost operation is underway, and Lynn County residents can receive a one ton of compost for no charge anytime they come visit, so if you have a big lawn project or putting in a new garden, we open up at seven AM, you can come at seven AM, get a ton, go home, realize, you know what, I need more, go back that same day, you get another ton, and then for contractors, you know, if they're buying big dump truck loads, it's, uh, twenty-four dollars per ton for contractors, or if residents wanna get a bunch at one time, the first ton is free, and then each additional ton is twenty-four dollars.
You get one ton free?
Every time you come.
If you live in Lynn County?
If you live in Lynn County. You have to come in your personal vehicle, 'cause we have a lot of contractors that say, oh, it's for my personally use, and, you know, they've got their landscaping truck right there with them, we're like, personal vehicles only. Uh, also down at that site is, uh, we have our food waste operation, this is where we're getting all the leftover produce from Hy-Vee, uh, Walmart, the local colleges, uh, the local hospitals, New York City Market, getting more restaurants coming onboard with that, instead of there is one, it's saving them money, you bring it down there, it's gonna cost them twenty-four dollars per ton to get rid of versus forty dollars per ton at the landfill, and then it's being turned around, instead of being buried in the ground, it's being turned into compost, made available for the public. Then our shingle recycling operation, we actually opted this both out here at County Home and out at, uh, Mount Trashmore, again, it's, it's cheaper to recycle asphalt shingles, and it is to throw them away, it's thirty dollars per ton versus the forty, and then it's literally going from roof to road, Pelling's taking that, and they're putting it down on a new road, so it's been a good project, and it, it diverts anywhere from four to seven thousand tons of shingles each year, and, you know, it doesn't sound like a huge number, but when you see the pile that they're actually diverting, it's a lot of material that's, you know, but puts a good use versus just buried in the ground. So lastly, uh, just wanna say thanks for being a member of the Solid Waste Agency and of making that even from us, please let us know when we try to take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Chester.
Yes, sir.
Any benefit to use?
Yeah, I have here the application for the special event permit. Um, pretty much everything this year is like last year, um, the bars will be selling beer, there won't be a beer tent. This is a, save the date is actually kind of a, a schedule of what we have planned, um, as it gets solidified at our next meeting next week, then I can bring all this back in June. This is the emergency management, you know, where people go during a tornado, it's not changed at all. Uh, this year the parade route is gonna be the same as always, closed the street, about the only thing that's changed is, um, horseshoes will be over at our bald diamond rather than down here across from the church. I don't think anything else really has changed, we're not having a live band this year, we are having a DJ, who will be available for public announcements and what have you, um, and we are adding some vendors, craft vendor type, type stuff, probably on this street here. The, the exact location of everything hasn't been solidified yet, so as I did, I can bring it back to the July meeting. Signal eighty-eight security has agreed, there's, in the process of getting me a quote and a letter for security, and DNS, uh, portables will be doing the, uh, porta potties again. I do have here the binder, we are switching insurance, I have the binder here, um, basically they take over twelve oh one on the eighteenth, which is what this says, um, the policy hasn't arrived yet, but for the next year, Westbin will be our, our insurance, and as soon as the policy there again, I can bring that in July. As far as the fireworks, they're in the process of filling out their special event permit, and I actually had the insurance, naming the city of Albinata as a, uh, additional insured, and I'm camping this weekend, I forgot my camera, so I'll bring it back in July, but they did go get it, they got, you know, they do, uh, same people did last year, um, over at the school, um, they do Walker and whatever, and they got them all together, and I do have the copy of that, so I can bring that in, in July also. Any questions as far as the insurance, Dave Marchston is our, uh, agent, he said he'd be glad to answer any of them if we had questions. Coverage is actually, uh, a little better than we've had in the past, so everything, nothing went down, everything went up, um, with the addition of some extra, some extra protection for the building and the bald diamond and, and what have you, so.
You foresee any additional problems with the new fireworks law, personal use of fireworks or anything?
The guy who does that, Gary Pfeifer, is actually very in touch with that, he's, you know, licensed, and, um, basically, from what I understand, and we haven't had the discussion since, because we had to postpone our last night's meeting till next week, but, um, you know, you guys have a, or the city has an ordinance for fireworks, so I mean, the new stuff, uh, is subject to city ordinance, you know, um, even if the, even if the state, the way I understand it, even if the state says it can, if you said it can't, they can't, you know, so, uh, no, I don't, I don't see any problem with it.
Well, our city council, they grant permits for disturbing fireworks, which, fire chief is gonna have to sign, did she get you to sign the, the, yes?
Ridd had, that may be what she's, what, just kind of with you, she's got the permit to get it to, to do, but, like I said, it's a, you know, you guys who proceed to the stadium, it's, no matter what state says, if you say not in the city, then that's the way it works, you know, so. And like I say, Gary is a licensed, however certified, py, pyro technician, yeah. So, I guess that's all I got.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Chester, are you here, you wanna tell us about that bench that you got?
Oh, the benches for Scott Blackford, we had two of them made, uh, they were made over at the, uh, prison in Anamosa, they're a steel bench with a powder-cook finish, purple and gold, across the back, they say, uh, in memory of Scott Blackford. We have two of them, we're looking for places, basically, within the city here somewhere to, to place them, we always help, when something like that happens, we try to help the family with the Christmas or whatever, they didn't need that, we thought with the girls his age, the age that his girls were, the memorial bench would, you know, would need a little more. Um, we thought about putting one of them over at our bald diamond, um, but we thought, we'd like to put one outside the post office here on the main, on the main deal, um, you know, we could, it's, it's ready to be basically bolted down and, and, uh, whatever, um, that would be our, our choice. They're, um, I don't know, that wide, you know, they're.
You mean that long?
That long, I mean, yeah, just, uh.
Holy crap.
Long legs, long legs, yeah, no, they're about that long, they got arms, you know, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're a, a really nice bench, I mean, they're here in town, they're made, they're ready to go, it's just, uh, no matter figuring out where to.
And they bolt down?
Where to put, yeah, they bolt down. They've got the flange on them so you can bolt them down.
They'll be bowling, bowling down too.
This came with the last meeting, and I think it was a question whether or not there is a city ordinance, which I looked at, that doesn't look like it's addressed.
No, and actually, according to state code, you go into thirty-seven point one seven state code, um, if somebody donates something, you have to do expressly designated by the donor to the city, you do as they wish.
It's on state property, it becomes city property.
Okay, if you put it out here, let's say if we'd ever built a park, would you have objections if we moved it off Main Street and put it in a park?
No, no, absolutely not, that would be, you know, I mean, if we had a city park, our park, the reason we don't wanna put them both over there is 'cause it's only used for, what, two months a year, and then there's no one there, um, that's why we thought the city, if, no, if there was a city park, that would, you know, would be the place, our, our next choice would be somewhere along the foundation sidewalk or on the, uh, complex out there, you know, somewhere, you want them somewhere in the public, you put them out there, it's no good if they're hidden in the, in the woods, so, and like I said, they do bolt down, so it wouldn't be a problem to move, you know, you'd have four little holes in the, in the sidewalk, you know, a good city got better to do that.
We probably wouldn't move it until we do a Main Street, then we might, you know, if we'd have a park or even a fire station or something out there.
Exactly, and if they're somewhere, you know, you guys got that, rather than the post office, you know, in front of the post office, I just, the reason that came up is because the sidewalk is so wide right there, that, you know, if you took a narrow sidewalk and put a bench, you wouldn't have a lot of rooms with snow and whatever, but it's, it's gotta be six feet wide right there, so you go, you put a bench up against the building there, you really wouldn't have.
Well, on that side, there's what, four, five, or six benches?
All, all down in front of it, yeah, in front of each business, in the historical side, you've got them, so.
I, I'm not against monuments or anything, but usually they fall in categories of memorials and works of art and things like that, and without an ordinance, it's kinda hard to approve things piecemeal and things like that.
Oh, no, I understand. And it's, it's better to make sure everything's exactly right.
I'd like to see the ordinance before it's approved.
But they are ready, they're here in town, in fact, they're over in one of the storage units, if you'd like to see them, or, you know, they're, they're here.
Is that with a picture somewhere?
I could, I could go undress one, and they're wrapped, you know, um, but like I said, they were made by the inmates up at Anamosa.
Is it a lot like, um, Gallagher's, uh, complex?
Can't say I've ever seen that.
Walk.
I probably have seen that, I walk a lot, sure, come on. No, I probably have seen it, I just, you know.
Yeah, 'cause it's powder coated and it's.
Yeah.
Not armed, I don't know where they have that one made, but.
Anyway, yeah, that's what we got.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I have an, I can't go through an all update here, uh, our project, um, Forest Brothers has all the water being, all the water services are in, uh, all the storm sewers in now, um, and all the tile, at least that were included in the plan, has all the tile and some of the connections, they're all in, uh, throughout the street, uh, just this morning, they started tearing up the, the street pavement, uh, starting that Main Street, then working their way west to Third Avenue, um, I, I think you're, I think you're stopping short of the intersection, I believe, until I get that all completed and paid, and then I'll hop across the, um, hop across Third there, and do that little sore section and intersection, so, um, it's, we're at the point now where we're, the streets are gonna be basically closed down to, uh, traffic, well, for any traffic, but at this point, It's, we're at the point now where we're, the streets may be basically closed down to, uh, traffic, well, for any traffic, but at this point. Uh, they're pulling the dating up, they'll do some grading work, um, widening everything out, you know, two feet on both sides. Put rock down, and then they have ENF paving is the subcontractors paving the road. And they'll come in, uh, with a, um, get a streetwide favor, a little from, you know, probably from Main all the way to Third, and get that all done. Unless the curation's all done on a concrete, then I'll get it open as soon as we can, but, um... So there's gonna be, I think they said at the meeting, they thought three to four weeks, hopefully three, but they said possibly four, it's weather is bad or something else comes up, but...
That's closure time?
Closure time, correct. Do you have a change order this month? Change order number two for six thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty cents. Uh, includes two items, uh, the first item is an imported bat built, and that's the same item we had discussed last month, uh, there's just more of it. Because the, uh, the wet floor soils we have out there, we just didn't wanna put it back in the ground and have sidewalks settling on us, so. So five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents of that change order, it is that line. And then at, at Third Avenue there, they're, uh, they tie into the water main, the existing water main. Buy the class A rock, fill that, uh, a little stronger base for, for the pavement, so. And that's for another additional one thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-six cents, so. That's our change order for this month. Contractor has a pay application this month for ninety-three thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-one cents. And that kinda pays for those items we discussed, and I finished up the water storm sewer and, um, subdrain, so. Those are the items I discussed on, on here. One other item that I didn't, I didn't write on into here was, um, if you wanted to talk about that, I mean, yeah. So, as you recall, we've been putting in, uh, a subdrain along, basically the back curve along the street there. And that drains, uh, both the gravel and goes underneath the pavement, uh, as well as tying in sump pumps as, as we go along. And those drain into our storm, uh, storm sewers. And I guess right now, based on everything on Boot Hard, short of like the last hundred feet, all drains towards, um, Main Street. From, from Third Ave to the west where we tie into the nailer division, um, there is no, we don't, we didn't plan for any subdrain because we didn't have any place to discharge it. It drains to the west there. We talked with Zach, Forest Brother, they opened up the, um, storm inlet around, I guess, right across the street from...
The storm inlet's right here. There's the first stormlet, storm inlet on Willow is, is right where the cursor is, and then, uh...
You pointed cursor.
Yep, and then we know that that six-inch tile that comes out of that storm box goes this far. I think it goes further. We're pretty confident that it goes further, but we couldn't get, I had Roderick come put the camera up it, and we just couldn't get past an obstruction. And I think your mailbox post is in it, or your neighbor's mailbox post is in it. Whatever, but anyway, it doesn't matter. I'll fix that, one way or the other, I'll fix that. But we, we feel like it probably goes the full length of the addition. But we don't know until we get that obstruction fixed, so we can follow it, so.
So we can kinda see on the, on the screen there, we have the two, yeah, two red and oranges kinda lines there. Kind of basically following the same, same profile of the drain, um, the subdrain, taking that, carrying west and then crossing the street right at the edge of the development. And then roll through the, um, yeah, forget the whole bill there, but, uh, and tying into, um... There's not one on either side of the street, there's nothing that goes in the west, can say, um... So this would be a way to get the moisture that goes under, that's underneath the pavement to a storm sewer.
Not only that, they'd have a place for them or something.
Yeah.
The other side of the street doesn't.
Yeah.
Trust me, I know.
Yeah, I know.
Correct.
I know.
So we, I, just using the, this, so what, the guy I kinda looked at is the worst-case scenario for you guys, to give you an idea of what, what it might, may cost. And if we had to go all the way to that, to where that red line is, that's what we kinda consider as the worst-case scenario, because we know it at least goes to that point. And that's, u- using the Forest Brothers bid items, we have all those bi- items in there already. It's gonna be some subbase, removing some pavement, uh, put the tile in. Nineteen thousand one hundred dollars, I guess, is what would come up to do that. Now, if it, if it, if it does, if we can dig it up and maybe just be blocked by a, uh... And he, he ran a camera up, I guess, I should say, did we, a guy had a rotor come out, they ran a camera up and, uh, couldn't get all the way up, it was obstructed by, by something, or handed.
A sump, a sump connection, instead of putting a T in, they cut into the six-inch tile and put their four-incher in it, and then the camera couldn't get by. So then they ran a sonde up, which is smaller, but you can't see, it's just a locator device, and it stopped here, right by this driveway. It could, they couldn't push it any farther. So, I, I still feel like this house, their sump pump exit is right on the north side of the house. And there is no nice green spot in this yard, now that it's getting hot and kinda dry, they would tell me they got a pop-up hooked up to that sump pump. I'm guessing that sump pump runs down here to this tile, that's why I think it does.
It runs across the driveway. Good journey, Paulson, he's still over there.
He dug it all the way over to here?
It was there and he had something blocking it, so he had to dig it up, and it goes across the driveway and hooks up on the south side of the driveway.
Does it really?
So that's, so that...
But it was...
Was it hooked up to something over here?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just wait rain, he just dug it up and fixed it.
So did he go...
How did he get, did he get his driveway up to do it?
I think it was, I don't think he went over the driveway.
Did he go where that red line ends? Did he goes past that red line, so it wouldn't be where he connected? So maybe that plug was something that was there beforehand, or...
I wonder if I talked to Porter or Killman.
I couldn't see Rex paying for that. Do you know what I mean? I, I wouldn't see Rex taking that sump line up and around there.
Then why did he put any of it in?
I don't know if he even did.
Well, because where are those two gonna drain? Of course, out the back like he did up.
Yeah, no different than your house, he didn't give you any nice drain.
That, that phase doesn't have decent plants, we didn't fill any subdrains, but, you know, there's definitely one tying into the intake.
So there is something that is going around that corner.
We don't know, we don't know.
You didn't run a ca- you, I, where did the camera?
Right here, the camera stopped on the south side of...
That's what I'm saying.
At their house and tell them the problem that you, the thing that you did to repair this, so that down the line, if there's a problem with their system, they've got somewhere to go with it.
I don't, you have pretty much photo records and know where stuff is, so all you have to do is contact city.
You know, I, I was just saying...
No, I'm just saying that's a solution.
Uh, shouldn't they do that? And I, I guess my other thing is, uh, is, is this thing about the tree, help it watch them. And they have a tree at the east end of, uh, on the south side they took out. They have one at the west end on the north side that they took out. Both of them are in the yard. Likewise, for the school, they took one out in the alleyway. And I'm saying, you know, this tree up at Watchos, uh, now you've dug, on two-thirds of this, roots on this tree have been, uh, damaged from this digging. You dug up there three times, you took out the lock fire hydrant, uh, you put the water line in, you put the water service back in the yard. And you put a ton of pill up there. And the, I don't have this from authority, uh, the people I've heard it from, this is merely hearsay. They say two years, this thing's gonna be dead. You go up and look at the tree now, you can already see where this tree is dying up there. There's already an indication that this tree is dying, that there, uh, it's not gonna do it. And I said to the homeowner, I said, "Look, I don't wanna get in the middle of this thing. If you want that tree, love that tree, wanna keep that tree, tell me to go away, I'll walk away from this." And she said, "If this tree is gonna live two years," uh, she wants it out of there. If a tree could live on, and you could say to her it's gonna live on and be fine, uh, then she's got no problem with this.
I don't think anybody could tell you if a tree's gonna live till tomorrow, it could start, it could start relating to die.
Issue, yeah, it's three variables.
And, and, and I understand what this is. But, uh, my thing is, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and pursue this. I don't think that there's any reason that her tree should be treated any differently than the other trees that were taken out on that street up there. She's no different than the other people that were in the yard. Uh, likewise, that sidewalk goes right across the front of her tree. And, and there, there's no reason that it doesn't qualify. And so, my thing is, uh, if you feel I'm wrong, I'm gonna go ahead and pursue this, I'm gonna file a complaint, I'm gonna make my statement.
Five minutes are up, okay? You got five minutes to speak, your five minutes are up. So, I, we appreciate your talking and concerns. My thing is, I think if they need, they want the tree out, they need to come to the council meeting and, she needs to come to the council meeting and we'll put on the agenda. So, okay?
You want her to come one more time?
Well, the homeowner should probably come down to the council.
You're not the homeowner, so.
Yeah, she could, at the minimum, she could contact the city if she wanted to.
Okay.
Just tell her to contact us if she thinks it's an issue.
Okay, okay.
Cause she is, she's the homeowner, that's what I'm telling you, she's the homeowner, she can contact the city if she thinks it's an issue.
So you're saying that I shouldn't really mess with this?
That's what I'm telling you, yeah, it's, she's the homeowner, she's the one that should probably contact the city, it's her tree and her house. Yeah.
All right, we're gonna move on. City maintenance report.
Okay, um, not much happening with the water system. The, uh, yearly consumer confidence report was completed, published, and certified with the DNR, so that's all done for another year. We all, we go to a class every year to make sure we get it done correctly, so that everybody's on the, everybody in town knows that their water supply is safe. Um, that is all done, we're, we've finished drawing down the flood booms, that went very well, um, with no issues. Our lift station pump maintenance company came by, um, we had a spectacular report there, he couldn't find anything wrong. Everything was, was golden, he took it all out, that, uh, that's my lovely timing when I get to clean the lift basket out. So that's where the two buckets to the landfill came in, that was my fun for the day. Um, the mowing, we're, we're managing to keep up, things have gotten a little more slack with the fiber crew mostly out of town, so that's getting better. I got the generator that was in Firetruck one thirty-four, and it had been yanked out and, I guess, overhauled, whatever. It had problems, same way, it's running great now, I got it back into the original compartment in the truck, no modifications, hooked it up to run. It starts and runs remotely, and it powers the lights and outlets that it's supposed to power. So I'm not sure exactly why that was such a big issue, but maybe I'm missing something, but that went very well, and it's done, it's working, so. And then, um, lumberjack Sharon and I have removed most of the bushes and trees on where Boot Hard meets Willow, um, that we agreed to take out. We just need to dip the root balls out now, uh, to get that ready for sidewalk when they get to that portion, and we'll have that done. Yeah, and that was on city right-of-way, the, the root balls in the trees were at least half of their, in, in almost every case, more than half on, in the right-of-way. And so, it would be in direct conflict with the new sidewalk. We are working with the two homeowners to try and transplant a couple of those lilac bush root balls, so that they can save them. We've trimmed them way back, I'm gonna try and dip them out and set them out for them, uh, so they can try and salvage them, so. So that all has gone very well. And that's basically it, just been keeping up with the crew, checking every day, um, taking pictures every day, I don't know if any of you have been checking the pictures. But I think that's gonna be helpful in the long run, oh, hopefully, maybe forty years from now, before we have our first problem, somebody can look at those pictures and see how things were laid out, so. So on to the list that is on the agenda. Iwarren Network. I've seen the presentation for this two or three times at, at continuing classes I've gone to. It's a very similar program to, um, what the REC's and the, and power companies do as far as, uh, having an agreement between them that if there's a major storm problem, whatever, um, that the cities are willing to, to offer assistance to the, you know, in their cases, power company to power company. In our case, it'd be city to city. For example, if, if central city's participating and they have a, a tornado, and their city guys are doing everything they can just clear streets, I could go over there and, and watch their wastewater system and their water sister, system for them, or help them clear streets while they're keeping an eye on their systems. You know, same way, we bought the trailer now, if, if Walker had a, a major storm, I could load up the skid loader and go up there and help them get streets cleared, et cetera. Same thing, if anything happens here, if we belong to this, um, we can ask for assistance if we need it. And I feel like it's important, because, you know, I know everybody will help out, but if there's, if we get hit hard in one of our systems, we can't just have town from up the street come help us out with that, we need somebody who's in the business. We need certified operators to help us deal with certain issues, and so that gives us that availability. The, the system is pretty straightforward, it just takes the mayor signing an affidavit saying that, yes, we agree to do this. Um, and you, we can choose not to go, I mean, if it's too far away, if we got too much going on here that I don't dare leave, fine. Same way with, you know, if we send out a request for assistance, we may not get what we were hoping, or we may get more people than we were hoping. So, um, I think it's a worthwhile pro- uh, worthwhile program. And if, if you agree, I can get the forms downloaded that need to be signed, and we can deal with the next, next meeting. If not, I'll just stop researching right now. But, uh, if you think it's worthwhile, I'll, I'll get the rest of the information that we need and have all the details for you, so.
But you're recommending approval?
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Kinda working the thing where his nibs.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if he, he would go, he would get paid time, and they would pay us, if he took the skids steer...
Yeah.
They'd pay us for the skids steer for hours and such and that, so it's not like you're doing it all for free, you do get reimbursed.
Right, same way, if we need the help though, we're gonna pay for those guys, but if that's the help we need, that's worth paying for, you know, so we don't screw it up, so.
Only takes it one time and make it all worthwhile.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I make motions, you just go ahead and download the stuff and we go forward with this.
Okay, I'll get the form ready for you and let you know when you can sign it, okay? Awesome, thank you.
Do you want a motion or is it...
I just made a motion. I already made a motion, though, we go ahead and pursue this. It's okay.
Chester, second it, okay? Well, all those in favor? Motion, okay, go ahead and do it.
Okay, thank you. Um, next on the list is the pole shed, I've been looking for options. There's really nothing new, um, from what we talked about last time, but my, my game plan, what I feel is, is kinda the best of both worlds, would be to, we had an Amish crew come and take, and bid the whole project to do it all. And that bid for the, for the, in its entirety was ninety-seven hundred dollars. And there's a big difference between what Brett said he would do with door openings, manure boards, et cetera, et cetera, than what the Amish crew would. I feel more comfortable with Brett doing that part. Brett wants nothing to do with fixing that roof, it's too labor-intensive for a crew like his. But the Amish crew says they'll tear off the tin and steel, replace it for thirty-eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. So, my thought process is, I say we have the Amish crew do the roof. And then we have Brett do the door openings and the tin on the sides. And then that way, we're doing business with a local contractor, but we're not spending the fortune on the roof. Because our only other option that I had found was to pay big money to a crew, a, a more traditional crew, to tear it off, put it on, or have a twenty-some thousand dollar rubberized roof coating system. tear it off, put it on, or have a twenty-some thousand dollar rubberized roof coating system that I think is not feasible. Oh, yeah, they, they sent out. No, I, I wanna show you this. I think they spent ten bucks just making the proposal cause they feel so bad about how they're trying to hose you that they, they put in a nice shiny package. It was ridiculous. So, um, anyway, that's my proposal for the pole shed. I feel like if we get on, Mar- Marvin Strach is the Amish gentleman's name. If we get on his list, it'd be after July one, before he would get to it. I don't think Brett would wanna start until closer to fall anyway, so we could have the roof done. As long as everything goes there, we tell Brett, go ahead and start, and we could even wait to approve that part of it. At least if we got the roof on it, our water leaks would stop and we got point one done. But, you know, there's some people have a problem with the Amish crew working cause they, they don't contribute to the tax load, et cetera, et cetera, but.
Would they replace any beam string, I don't know if you need to?
Yeah, probably add an additional cost if they found a rapper that was in, in need of repair. But there again, their bid is, is super cheap. I mean, if we, you know, if we wound up with an extra three or four hundred bucks on that, I'd be amazed.
What's the total budgetary proposal to get all the work done?
It'd be right at twenty-five thousand. It'd be thirty-nine hundred for the roof. And Brett's number was twenty-one seven fifty, including the doors. So, it'd be just a hair over twenty-five.
Fourteen foot doors.
Yeah, two new fourteen foot doors are re- yeah, and also replacing the, the twelve foot one that's already there, that's in bad shape, and putting new walk-in door in the, the Amish crew did not include that in their bid. Uh, but Brett did have that in his, um, and Brett was gonna do a lot more work with manure boards around the bottom to, you know, get that bottom in stabilized.
What's that, did they put a gauge on the tanners? It's just standard sh- uh, steel roof?
Yeah, neither one of them specified.
This is standard steel roofing?
Yeah, which I think for the age of our building, there's no use in going with any.
Sometimes they do make a little thinner, and if, and you can bid cheaper, that's cheaper steel, if it's good steel and.
We got the funds for this?
We put twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just looking for other options because everything kept coming in due feeling, so.
I had this crew do my house down here, and for the kind of steel they put on was, was it, uh, standard grade four? And the insurance company was happy with it, so.
Can you do it without exceeding twenty-five thousand?
I can't quite get there, cause it's twenty, uh, Brett's is twenty-one, twenty-one seven fifty and the Amish, the roof bid is thirty-nine hundred, basically thirty-eight ninety-six. Do you have a calculator, Sharon?
I would kinda like to see, make, maybe make a motion, at least get the roof started.
Twenty-five six, yeah.
I'd rather see, get the roof started, cause that's, that price right there, I would, I mean, that's, I don't know how they do it for that, obviously.
It's cheap labor.
It's very, yeah, but I mean, it is labor intensive, they're cheap labor. Um, I think, I think we get the roof done and then we go from there because the leaks. You aren't gonna wanna put new boards up and everything else inside that building and then the roof's still leaking on them.
What do you need to do the roof?
Uh, thirty-nine hundred, thirty-eight ninety-six.
Not exceed five?
Yeah.
A motion, a motion to not exceed five thousand in your direction to complete the roof projects on the shop?
Yeah, I'll second that, excuse me.
Go ahead and fix the roof for, with Amish crew, okay?
And I'll verify with Brett that his bid's still good and that he still wants to do the rest of it. And then we can make a motion on that next meeting, cause it's gonna happen much later in the summer anyway, so.
Yeah, you're right. Well, go ahead, let's do it, then I'll talk to him.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Alright. That might be something that Brett might wanna know about, because, you know, about the roof and when they're doing it. Because if there's something that he needs to do before they put that roof in. You see, I guess where I'm going with that. Sometimes it's easier if that roof's off for him to do something.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he'll probably just have to pop loose the raking corner, slide the steel up in there, but, yeah. I'll, I, I understand and I'll talk to him. Yep, very good. Um, next on the list is, um, the bridge condition report. Um, some of you might not have known about it, but, um, they did a bridge inspection on our bridge. It's a three-cell box culvert that, for Dryer Creek on Burnet Station Road. There's two of the three cells that are silted shut. They, they'll only take water in high water. Uh, they wanted us to clean it out, but the report two years ago was just kinda a suggestion, uh, we felt after reading it. We got a new one and the county has said, basically, you have done nothing. You need to get your button gear and get that problem solved. So, I, um, rented a, uh, larger than Marty, uh, excavator. Uh, it got delivered this morning and, from Scott Van Keppel. It was the best price for the machine that I could find. And we cut down a bunch of volunteer trees and saplings down in the, in the ditch. And I started dredging out the silt and I rented the machine for a week. And that's the one I'm gonna use to dip those root balls out up on Willow and set aside, cause it's got a bigger bucket and it's a heavier machine. Um, and so, I should be able to get all that project done within that week allotment. It was a thousand dollars rent and then two hundred bucks each way delivery, so fourteen hundred bucks. And we're gonna have, we dumped in a little erosion stone just to have a place to land the excavator on. Um, beyond that, hard time cutting the trees. Just aren't gonna have much invested beyond that to get it done. Yeah, we had Rachi look at it. They, they bid forty thousand. It's, it's not over, over when I get done this week. But, cause I'm just gonna pile that dirt up on the bank to dry. I've spoken to both farm owners and they were okay with, you know, when harvest is done, we could come in there and, and pull that, that dirt out. Should be good black dirt that we can use. So, I mean, it does, what I pulled out so far, it does look good if it dries out, so. But piled up on the bank, it should dry out good.
What about the, did they say anything about the?
Yeah, no, they just. Yeah, it's back in the report again, but there's, yeah, I don't.
Two spots?
Yeah, well, there's three now, sorry.
Three.
Yeah. There is three now.
There's still more concern with the dirt.
Yeah, they, their number one concern is the dirt, and with the dry weather we're having and the forecast we saw, I just said, this is ultimate time to get it out of there. Cause you're not fighting high water in the creek and it'll just be done. And at a, what I feel is a minimal com- cost compared to what we were quoted before, so, that should be.
You can reach both sides?
I gotta. I, no, I can't. I won't be able to, um, reach in there with the excavator all the way, but there's really not that much dirt in the cells. I'll be able to get the bulk of it out. Um, I can rent a walk behind skid loader for, for three hundred dollars if I feel like I need to, but that's kinda on a wait and see type deal. When I get it cleaned out as much as I can with the excavator, then I'll, you know, kinda see if that's really necessary or not, I mean.
Water flow, take it out, it's moving past it.
Especially if I stir some of it up.
I've seen that before.
If you got it so the water's not slowing down when it's coming through there because of the dirt piled up on both sides, that's the only reason it settles, it's slowed down, so.
And this is fifty years worth of accumulation.
If you're going full bore through there, it's gonna.
Yeah. I'm not gonna get too carried away. If I get that big pile on both sides gone, any inspector that goes through there, I think would be happy. We'd be at ninety percent capacity of the, of the culvert or more by the time I get the stuff out from in front of the cells. I mean, it, it went from being, boy, we think maybe you oughta do this to get it done now, in the two letters over a two-year period. And, and like I said, it's fifty years worth of accumulation. I didn't quite understand why it became so urgent all of a sudden.
So, are you done yet? You still got more work?
No, I got more work to do. Yeah, I just, just dug a little bit today, so, yeah. Uh, I gotta have the machine back by Thursday to not hit over a week's worth of rent, and I intend to be done by next Thursday. That is my intent. Um, that's all I got.
Is that? Picture of it?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I was gonna show you. This is picture of the north side. This is all, all silt, all the way through here, saplings growing in it. That's the first load of rock we dropped in, so I could drive the excavator down in this area to try and reach. You can't see it, but the second cell is right about here. If, that's where it ends. This is the far, uh, west edge of the, of the culvert. And this cell right here is the only one that's flowing water right now. There's no water getting through the other two. It, if the water gets high enough, it kinda fills the cells up and it sits there, and slowly drains away a little bit. And then, uh, the other side. Yeah, that's, that's the creek flow on the other side of the, no, I take that back. That's standing on the west side of the culvert looking down. That's the open creek channel right there, that's flowing through the west cell of the, uh, of the DNR, must be that, yeah. Yeah, this is the mound that's on the south side. It looks bigger than it is, cause the weeds and the grass are three foot tall. But that's just a matter of driving down the ditch and pulling that dirt out. There's, you can't see him, but there's a couple little saplings I need to take out yet on that side and be able to swing the, swing the boom on the excavator, but it's just, like I said, fifty years worth of accumulation of silt, so.
Is it, after you dig this, is this something that we're gonna maybe need to put some rip raft or something down along the bank a little bit? Probably to keep erosion, especially if you have to dig. I mean, that would be, I'm just going that that can be an added little cost that we're not.
To be determined, and for that matter, if I get this done before they're all done tearing out concrete, and we got concrete that, at Moot Heart, that is, problem is, I gotta get it in there, and I'm not gonna damage crops in those farm fields getting there. Cause I don't wanna open that can of worms, in case you get a, you know, farmer that is unreasonable about what they want for damages for driving over a row of, you know what I mean? If we gotta drive over the outside two rows of the crop to get a dump truck down there to dump concrete out, I don't know if I wanna go there.
Stuff the concrete aside.
Yeah, and then we can carry it down in there when we haul the dirt out, maybe. I don't know. Either that or we just wait till we have concrete, other concrete tearouts and try and make sure we get it in there. One of the two, but I don't think we wanna buy a bunch of erosion stone to do it with.
No, I'm just throwing that possible cost out that if we don't have that other stuff available.
The funny part about this whole project, well, not funny, it's actually quite serious. We were working on trees one morning and cut till eleven-thirty and then went to lunch and took care of some other things, came back at one o'clock and somebody had moved into the farm field on the north side and dug up a bunch of tile with no one call locate. Including within about two feet of the new fiber optic line in that ditch. Some guy from Lamont, actually, yeah. And so, I kinda confronted him and he said, no, I didn't get a locate. I put all this tile in, I know where it all is. I said, you know there's fiber in there? Oh, yeah, that fiber was put in a long time ago. I said, that shows exactly how stupid you are. And so, he was gonna, he was adamant, he was gonna come back that afternoon and finish fixing those. I said, go ahead, I, I will call you in if you put another piece of metal in the ground here today. So, he did call in a locate, and he hasn't been back to fix them yet, but, uh, he literally was no more than a foot from the new fiber line. Maybe two, so. Anyway, that's all I got.
I was just wondering, guy, we got that new trailer up there, you know, can we get a tongue lock on that?
I put it inside. It's in the shed now.
It's in the shed, now, it's gonna sit outside, it's like, I've owned it a couple times and it's like, yeah, somebody could hook onto that. You'd never find it, baby, you know? Especially, it's a nice trailer.
Yes, yeah.
So, oh, as long as you got it inside, okay, yeah, but if it's gonna sit outside, that probably.
Oh, no, it was on my mind too, so.
How about your shop door that I had to pick?
Yeah, I am excited what to do there. I mean, the deadbolt works and the deadbolt's a better lock anyway. It's just a tiny bit less convenient to not be able to just twist the, the lock and slam the door behind you. But that door needs some work on the, on the edge if we're gonna put a new lock set in it.
That was kinda what I was gonna say is, that seemed a little sketchy.
Oh, it is.
I mean, I literally picked it with a piece of wire.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and maybe honestly, we should, maybe we should be. Should be using the deadbolt anyway, you know, rather than just the door lock on it, so, yeah. It's on the list, just not right up here, it's down here somewhere. Yep, it's locked.
Well, let's go into number nine, employee reviews.
The personnel committee has reviewed these, uh, as of last month. I had submitted to the group the, um, the table, uh, salary as well as the percentage compensation to, for review. I've talked to a few of you about this, not all of you, but most about this, uh, particular options. Also, the reviews from the individual council, I did say that I would, uh, submit those, uh, or compile the reviews and submit those. I found that the following week, I don't have that form electronically. I thought I did, but I had a different one that I was using, so if you would email me that, I could get that. I will get those compiled, but it doesn't change the fact that you had excellent reviews, so. Anyway, so I'm speaking, uh, to everyone. I think based upon the comments of the people that I did talk to, both about what the desires were and with the table chart, it's not that, um, anyone's against a table chart, it's just that the ones that was proposed uh, in unit grade twelve, maybe expanding that to a step twenty might be a better option, and then shortening the percentages between that. So, it had better latitude between, um, where the salary range starts to where it ends. And then, it didn't address either part-time or seasonal work, and I, I think maybe it's not a bad idea. It just needs a little bit more work before we implement something like that. So, the other option then was looking at the percentage, whether standard two and a half percent for this year, and then maybe bring this back next year. So, at the desire of the mayor and council, the recommendation is two and a half percent across the board for, uh, both the city clerk treasurer and public works director. And, uh, I would make a motion to, um, approve that for effective July one, twenty seventeen.
Motion's been made.
I'll second it.
Second, alright, move second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Can I ask a question? Uh, John, giving consideration for John.
I looked it up, November fifteenth.
Yeah, he's been a year and a half, no raise, um, doing everything he's asked, so.
Yes, I didn't have, um, a salary piece or the reviews on that to include that, but I have no problem at all with that as well. And I don't know, is that a percentage or does he get that piece? All I see is, is, is the time cards on that, so I didn't really know how that was going to work, so.
I don't know, two and a half percent increase on fifteen dollars an hour isn't, I mean, you can't, whatever. I, I just wouldn't wanna lose him, cause I mean, it, it's almost no training required there. It's just like, John, do this and it's done. I, I guess I'm just asking you to treat him well. If maybe the two and a half isn't the way to go, maybe just saying it's gonna be fifty cents an hour.
Give him a dollar amount raise.
Well, yeah, on his deal, because he isn't full-time, his time is varied and just kinda, for him, it might be just reasonable to say, okay, he's doing a good job, we're gonna give him a quarter, we're gonna give him fifty cents, or, or whatever the case may be. The percentage may, is just a little harder with him when you see his given salary, you know, his given workload.
What is two and a half percent on that? It's like twenty-five cents or something?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, and maybe that is good enough, I, I, you know, I'm just throwing the dollar.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask a question, just, I agree with you. Is that a, you know, I know John and you know him and you've worked with him. Is that, is that like a slap in the face fifty cents? I mean, I want your opinion on this.
He honestly has not asked. I, I've only brought it up. I do have one more piece of the puzzle that I want you to consider. Sharon and I researched a little bit. This weekend, water testing, um, almost every other city that has mandatory tests on the weekend and without full-time staff on payroll in the weekend, it's two hours, no matter how long it takes them to do it, instead of one, like we do. The thing that is a real kicker about John is if I ask him to do water tests, he drives seven miles from home to spend, unless we're going to the lagoon, lagoons, twenty minutes doing two chlorine samples and writing down numbers for fifteen dollars. So, um, I think it should be an across-the-board thing, because Sharon, same token, if she comes and does the weekend deals, she's driving from her home further. For me, it's not as important, cause I live right here in town, but it should. she's driving from her home further. For me, it's not as important because I live right here in town, but it should be a uniform, you know, these are DNR mandated tests. We have no choice. We have to do them. To make it better for John and Sharon, um, it obviously would, would, you know, benefit me as well, but, um, so instead of paying for two hours on the weekend, you pay for four, is what it would boil down to. That's something to, and he doesn't complain and he hasn't asked for money, so I think any raise he gets, he's gonna be happy with. And he doesn't put in a slug of hours. So back to your question, I don't know if fifty cents would be a slap in the face.
You give a guy a raise and he guys looks at like, well, that was, you know, that's kinda like a slap in the face.
His anniversary date is November?
November fifteenth, he's been here a year and a half.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
And like I say, seasonal part-time work did come up and it was an oversight on our part or my part at least. And, uh, so that's why I just don't have an answer for that, but it's will of the council. I, I don't wanna buy any means short him. I don't know how that works and that's part of my, uh, recognition from it.
And so far, he has not tipped over the tractor or.
Does he get a lot more stuck?
He has, but, yeah, well, that makes three of us.
He does that a lot.
Yeah, Sharon laughs at me when she comes to pull me out.
So, do we wanna entertain, create a motion for a raise for?
What's you guys' feelings?
His current rate is fifteen even.
What, about a fifteen fifty or fifteen seventy-five or sixty, what, what? I'm wanting to know what you guys are thinking.
And that's been his rate since he started?
Yeah.
Without a raise.
I mean, even if you're gonna give him a fifty cent raise the first year, well, he's a year and a half into this.
I'll take a dollar, be out of the way.
Increase to sixteen.
And I don't know what his hour, we looked it up once, but he doesn't, you know, his total hour, I mean, you're probably gonna tax the budget by a couple hundred bucks by giving him that dollar at the most for the year, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we give the part-time employee John Arring a one dollar raise. Uh, do we wanna do it as of right now?
Or we do it July first?
Let's just say July first.
One dollar an hour.
One dollar, yeah, an hour raise.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second? Which definite, all those in favor? Motion carried.
Do we need a motion for the two hours on the weekends or is that just under, an understood?
That's what all public works do, like.
I think we ought to have a motion if we're gonna do it.
Hold, hold on. So, right now you get what, just a dollar minimum?
I, when I fill out my time card, I just put right one, one hour for Saturday, one hour for Sunday and it's.
Yes, because everybody is two dollars.
Yeah, two hours is their normal. If you gotta come in anything on the weekend, you're gonna do it.
That's right. Where I work, the minimum of the three hours show up if they come in, so. Your mom go home at three hours.
John Deere shows up and it's a hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, I'm just saying, mostly for John and occasionally Sharon when they're driving that far to come and do those tests, so.
We need to maintain motion for that, if that's what you're gonna go and do.
I just need to understand it so I know for the future, weekend pay is what?
Weekend pay, whatever our wages times one hour, no matter how long it takes us to do it.
Oh, so, okay, so minimum call-in pay?
Yeah, basically.
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah, we have that, two hour minimums.
So you wanted to go two hours, so it's four hours total for Saturday. I make a motion that we implement a four-hour weekend for our water testing.
Maybe you better say two hours per, per weekend day because in case we.
You're correct. Two hours per day. No matter how long it takes.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Brian second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Otherwise, we'll go on to Mike's street closing for July first, picnic tables for a ten-year anniversary.
He wants to close off First Street out here and put out picnic tables and drills at his ten-year anniversary, so he can improve.
So, he's talking like between his building and the city hall.
And they always leave it open so that they can get back to the park he wants, but I see he wants nine AM to ten PM. I'll have to talk to Lizzie about when they come to get the mail.
And maybe irrelevant, but could you get a fire truck back through there? If this fire.
Yeah.
Well, and they just put cones up.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Yeah, the, the big hand shed, that huge, huge, that hand shed truck goes through there every week, so.
This is like right here?
Yeah, right through the backside.
Isn't this like a regular event request though?
Yeah, this is like.
And this is what we got?
That's what's available over at Mike's for Lizzie to operate with.
I think they should kinda, you know, I filled one out for Cozy's Street for hours.
Though, aren't they?
Okay, I'll get her to film and then I wanna see that she checks on, because they come and pick up the mail over here and he's gonna need to come back to the door.
Let's see the form.
We all filled out a form, Mike said form.
We can okay with them filling out a form. Getting the proper.
So this is no special event except it's just an anniversary of them being open. It's not for, it's not for charity, it's not doing anybody but them thing. What?
I'll make a motion that we allow Mike to close the street, First Street over here pending the, filling out their, uh, the proper paperwork that, that they should fill out. On July first.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second? Mr. Saffron, all those in favor?
I'm a name on that, but.
I am too.
Two names, three A's. Motion carried. And with that, make a motion.
I'll make a motion again.
Second.